Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the, what month is this? June 15th, 2017, Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting. Got it out of my mind tonight. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Before I start, I'd like to give a shout out to my wife because tonight's our anniversary. I'm here and she went to play cards, so that all works.
Happy ever.
Okay. Second of all, I'd like to with regret say and announce that Mr. La Perch to my left has decided to retire from the planning board. And so this will end up actually being his last meeting with us this evening. And that said, I'd just like to say that Ed has been a tremendous member of the board for the last 16 years?
How long has it been?
16 years. He has a tremendous amount of knowledge and he has contributed greatly to the board and more importantly, to the public and to the betterment of our community. So for that, I thank him very greatly. We have to take him to Pizzeria Uno after the meeting just to celebrate his retirement. So that said...
Too bad you're gonna miss the wine shirt night, Ed.
Maybe we could persuade him to be an alternate and fill in as he feels, as he sees fit based on his schedule, not ours. That's a possibility, but we're gonna work through that. At any rate, this evening, we have a pretty full agenda. The first thing on our agenda is public hearing number one, Marist College 51 Fulton redevelopment site plan hearing regarding a site plan for a change of use and renovation of 51 Fulton Street to accommodate office, classroom, and studio space. Site modifications to 51 and adjoining 57 Fulton Street. Pedestrian improvements to the Fulton Street right-of-way and campus sidewalk connections to the south 40 Fulton Avenue, 40 Fulton Street. 51, 57, and 40 Fulton Street, Zone FC Fairway Center in high-end institutional district, 5.607 acres, nonlisted action, Marist Real Property Services, Inc., owner is the applicant here. I see they are. And the first two items are Marist College. We will treat them separately this evening. Okay. Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Justin.
Members of the board, thank you very much. I'm Jeff Brackett, Executive Vice President for Marist College. I'm here with our Director of Physical Plant, Justin Buttwell. Before we begin, let me also tip my hat to Ed. Thank you for your assistance in my own case for the last seven years that I've had the pleasure of working at Marist and working with this board. The 51 Fulton Street project, as you know, is a project that we've been working on for the last several years. The overall scope is to add parking lots in the east and west sides of the buildings, renovation of approximately 15,000 square feet of that interior space, which is the focus of our presentation today. In addition, landscaping along the Fulton Street side of the building, a facade renovation to that structure, along with a pedestrian crosswalk and traffic calming at Fulton Street. We envision this to have future, present, and future uses that will benefit not only the college, but we hope the community. The first is that we're going to use it for swing space for the second project that we'll be talking about tonight. And that is for our arts faculty and program to move over into this space for a year while we're renovating the steel plant studios and putting the addition on. It currently serves as a warehouse, record storage facility. We'll continue in that capacity. And in the short term, for the art program, will house our digital labs as well as our art facilities. And in future use, we want to then pivot to begin to use it as a technology and data center, instructional spaces, and economic development incubation-type spaces. Along with Justin, we have John Andrews, our civil engineer, and Kim Ryan, the architect of the project. Justin?
Well, now, John will go over the site plan currently.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Andrews. I won't bore you with a lot of details, but I think you're all familiar with 51 Fulton Street, going back to the old Dutchess County Resource Recovery. Across the street is the tennis courts and the parking area. And as Dr. Brackett indicated, we're putting a pedestrian crosswalk. This front portion of the building is going to be created into a pedestrian space. We're pulling up the asphalt. We're putting in some sidewalks. We're actually putting in some exterior spaces for use by the art program. And then along, if you're familiar, along this side of the building, the west side, there's a large fence that separates us from the property of the recycler that owns it in the back. And we're gonna be placing parking along there. We're gonna be trying to pull up some of the pavement around various places of the building to give it a little green space. We don't need all the pavement. We are going to connect to the adjacent 57 Fulton Street. Requires staircase. If you're familiar, it's about a 10-foot jump in elevation between the two properties. We're gonna be improving this driveway. That's the old paper company. It had a very wide driveway. We're gonna try to narrow and channelize it a little bit. We will be making some modifications to there. There was some concerns about handicap. We've worked that out with the building department. We'll be flipping these handicap spaces over closer to the building, which will satisfy your building department, and that will be on a future submittal. The major thing here, I think, is the traffic calming. And we're proposing to cross Fulton Street. And your highway department, your police department, and the Fairview Fire District kinda gave us strict guidelines. So what we propose to do is place a pedestrian crossing mid-block here. We're going to put flashing pedestrian crossing signs right at that mid-block. In addition, from the last submittal, we are adding pavement markings across the pavement, starting very small and getting larger as you approach. Mazur has used those in other situations and found they are to be very effective. It does not, it really not intended to do much except call your attention to you're approaching something differently. We did also move the signs a little farther out, as requested by your police department. The last meeting, there was some concerns about lines of sight and other things. We went out there, we took a look at it, and depending upon where you stand, there are real no guidelines for pedestrians. But the rule of thumb is you need to be able to see sufficient queue of the oncoming traffic to enable you to make a decision whether or not you can cross the street. So it's kinda the same decision a driver makes, but you gotta add that little extra time for walking across the street. If you approach this walk from the south, you can virtually see almost all the way to Route 9 and almost all the way to Fox Run. The way that's positioned, you have a rather long line of sight. You stand on the north side and look both ways, you can almost see all the way up to Fox Run. You don't lose the cars coming down the hill. You get a good line of sight. Looking this way, you can kinda see, there are some junipers in the way, but we are actually taking those out. And the driveway is being shifted slightly to the west, so that it's kind of being widened and shifted. So when you look that direction, the line of sight is actually gonna improve. Those junipers are going. Our landscaper has higher trees, but most of your line of sight is out near the road because the vantage point for a pedestrian is typically in the four-to-six-foot back from the white line situation. So they are usually closer than a driver. So most of your line of sight is actually down the road. Even being conservative, there is a point down here, right at the base, where your kinda car comes into that vertical curve as you start up the hill. You don't fully lose it, but if you're not paying attention, the headlights might, you might blink and miss them slightly. But in all cases, we have greater than 380 feet, which is greater even than your police recommended for a driver. So it adds another two and a half to three seconds, which would be typically what would be necessary for someone to cross the road. So we think that we've got the proper location. We think there's some minor clearing that has to be done up here. That's gonna be done in conjunction with the signs. We have moved the crosswalk ahead signs. There is the possibility for those signs to be lighted, although our traffic engineer doesn't think they need to be. But that opportunity presents itself. But overall, we think this affords the proper location. Once the pedestrians get across the street, they'll be right into the building. And I think that is the basics of this proposal.
Thank you. Brief.
Let's see. Tonight is the first public hearing for this project. I believe it was successfully advertised. The Poughkeepsie Journal managed to get it in, unlike last time. The staff, the plans are substantially improved. A lot of our previous comments have been addressed. There are some cleanup items left, but basically, staff feel the project is ready for a secret negative declaration and a conditional approval. I'll call out just a couple of items, and probably the most significant items are things that I feel can be handled by staff afterwards. One of them had to do with the lighting. The crosswalk lighting is not legible. We just wanna see it so we can make sure that it's well lit. Similarly, throughout the site, the board may wanna discuss with the applicant, there's lighting up along Fulton Street, but the parking areas that are to be striped, it's understood the buildings are of mixed use. They're only partially for academic functions and also for warehouse storage function. But some substantial part of the proposed new parking delineated areas may be used by staff for academic functions, and they should be lit for that area. They shouldn't be left dark. Similarly, for the aisles, it's a little difficult to read them. That's probably our most substantial comment. We had a couple of comments. I understand the applicant may be doing architectural presentation tonight. The board's free to, you know, it's welcome to have that discussion. We are suggesting that the board wait until after, if it chooses to defer site plan, to actually take action on the architecture at a later date or after site plan approval, whenever it occurs. We had a couple of comments that the board often considers in architecture when you get there. One is just roof equipment, screening it. There are no proposed improvements to the sides of the building, and we thought, it's up to you, but we thought you might wanna see something simple like paint for the portions visible from Fulton Avenue, and just think about the roof line. Those are in our comments tonight, and that's our recommendation.
I suspect we'll probably, let's see, grant conditional approval. Once we do that, when we go into architectural review, then the architect can present the boards and so on and so forth. You were thinking...
I apologize. I'm thinking of the other project, yes.
All right. So wait till we get to the architectural review section, then we'll let you do your thing, okay? We won't forget you. Okay. This is a public hearing. Moving second. Moved in second. Call the question, those in favor. Aye. Posed. Motion carries the 7-2-0. No one signed up to speak on this application. Is there anyone that came in since? Seeing no one, I move we close the public hearing. Moved in seconded. Call the question, those in favor. Aye. Posed. Motion carries 7-0. Let me start this evening with Peter.
Part of your landscaping plan, you have seven scarlet oak trees, and they're planted around the, on the north side of the street, near the crosswalk. Why did you select that tree?
It's a tall shade tree to contribute to the traffic calming.
Can't hear.
The larger trees contribute to traffic calming.
My concern would be, since, you know, we have some concern about safety there, is it possible that those trees, because of their size at some future date, might impede, further impede the visibility there? I mean, according to the plan here, they're already extended out into the street.
When we spoke with our, and I will be frank with you, I do not do trees. We have a landscape architect who does that. He does all of Marist Landscape Architecture, and I will certainly pose the question to him. But when we sat down planning this, we raised the very issues that you raised. And apparently, these trees, I think, have, the canopy is up high, so that as they grow, the canopy tends to stay up high, and it would not impede it, but it kinda grows to, can he add some shade? But I can certainly raise that question from him. We do have some room to move them back. I think we got caught, I think we're in a kind of catch-22. I think staff had wanted them a little closer to help move. We might be able to stagger them, to put them sort of triangular. But again, as I said, when it comes to pedestrian issues, typically pedestrians stand between four and six foot back from that white line. So if you were to look at where the trees are placed, they're kind of placed behind that line of sight, so they would not necessarily get in the way of a pedestrian. And drivers, they wouldn't be blocking the drivers either, because that's, pedestrians tend to stand closer to the highway.
If it is in any way typical of an oak tree, at least ones that I have seen, the vegetation generally hangs low, and the vegetation is very thick.
Could I suggest that we make that a condition and work with the landscape architect to see if that works, or maybe there's a better solution?
Yeah, we don't wanna make a bad situation worse.
London plane trees or honey locusts or something that's less canopy.
The other thing is, when I looked at that, as we discussed this at the last meeting, about the sight line, sight distance, I was surprised because I looked that there is no standard, at least that I could find, for a pedestrian crosswalk in the middle of a block. And we got this study back from the town police. Last year, they did a study. Eighty-fifth percentile was 39 miles an hour, and they had, highest speed recorded was 65. At 39 miles an hour, the car's traveling at about 57 feet per second. And as best as I could determine, I'm guessing, from the crosswalk to the curve, Fulton, where it goes down the hill, descends, you have about 300 feet. So if a car is doing 39 miles an hour, you have about six seconds to make, to determine whether or not it's a safe crossing. If you have the car that's doing 65, that's 95 feet per second. So now, your time is diminished. You have about three seconds to make that decision. So I'm not an engineer, but I mean, to me, I think that it's a matter of some concern when you have that demographic that is often looking at a cellphone instead of paying attention to what's coming up or down the street. So I think at the minimum, you're proposing, were you proposing the flashing lights again?
The flashing lights are right at the crosswalk. So they'll be flashing right at the crosswalk. This, I believe, this sign is placed down here, and this one is placed, this one is about 275 feet, and this one is the 380. And this line of sight, actually, we measured it. It comes down, if you were out there, there's a gas line valve that pops out of the, it's about 380, almost 400 feet down to there.
Yeah.
But you can actually see, you can actually see farther.
Yeah. The south side is fine. I think the concerning is the north side.
Understood, yes. And I actually did the measurements myself with my associate, so I wanted to understand exactly where you were coming from. So while I understand your concern, I, like you say, there are no guidelines, and we try to apply, you know, reasonable standards.
Now, you, on the flashing lights, were you concerned about just two flashing lights, or were you expressing a concern about two additional flashing lights?
Our traffic consultant said as a fallback position, what you, we could also do if Marist was inclined, would be to flash all four signs that we place. So in other words, this one could become a flashing sign 380 foot ahead, and this one would also be, excuse me, 275 and 380. We could flash both of those if need be.
It just seems to me, when you're dealing with human life, better to err on the side of caution.
I don't think that's such a bad idea, you know?
Unless it's right in front of somebody's house and it's flashing their windows. I've seen that.
We're not opposed to it. No, that's not near residential. I have no objection to the forum flashing.
Nope.
Even if it flashes a little slower than perhaps some of the other ones, you know, but something to get their attention.
They're safe and sorry, especially, you know, when you consider, again, the demographic and the attention distraction.
Did anybody see a problem?
Yeah, it's good.
Let's do that.
As long as there's no problem with the college. I have no problem.
No, the college has no problem with that. I agree 100% with your sentiment there, obviously.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Before we continue, I want two things. I want everybody to check their pockets, because Carol found $25 in the floor in the back, a 20 and five singles. So if you have the serial number for all six of those bills. Anyway, if somebody lost $25, a 20 and five singles, let Carol know.
I heard that was a donation for Mr. Perch's retirement function later this evening.
Okay. And before we go back to Carl, I'm sorry, Andy, do you have any comments on this, or town engineer?
We just have some minor comments on some erosion sediment controls that could be added. This project doesn't exceed the limit for speedies per minute, but there's some basic things that we thought could be done. We've also, since there is some roadwork proposed in the roadway with the pavement markings and the curb work, we did think that it would be appropriate to provide a maintenance protection of traffic plan. And then, that's it. We just have a little bit, a few more tweaks to be done to the driveway to make sure it all drains properly.
We've gotten his comments. We take no exception. We will do that. And, you know, we pulled off the last curb work without having too many details, but it is getting narrow out there, so we'll have maintenance protection traffic.
Good. Thank you. Carl?
Yeah, and same issues. I agree the flashing lights that Peter suggested may help the situation, because I do see teenagers never, mine included, never looking up from their phone. You know, when I did go out there, the line of sight distance looks pretty good, except for the hedges that you're gonna remove, so that'll help the situation. I do wonder if that study with the 65 mile an hour was done before or after the stop sign at the top of the hill that was...
Children's home?
Yeah.
You can build up a good set of stuff.
But going down the hill, that's certainly possible that it was after. I did have one more question on the pedestrians. You're putting this in as an interim classroom space and stuff, but do you expect the amount of pedestrian traffic to drop after the steel plant is completed, or about the same, if you use it for other purposes?
In all likelihood, it will, for that population. There'll be more staff over there at some point, and, but not cohorts of students going to a class, per se. That will all be in the second project that we're talking about today.
Right. So once the second project is completed, that will, yeah, so that will...
As far as we can see, that will occur. Right.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Ben?
I think any concerns I have would be, have been addressed by Peter.
Well done. Ed?
I'm all set. I think these guys have learned well. Thanks, guys.
I'm good. No additional comments.
Same. I'm all set. Thank you.
And I'm good, too. So let's move ahead. If you have the latest one.
I don't know. You got the same.
I don't know. June. Go ahead. I'll read mine, you go ahead.
See if it's right or not. I move the planning board as lead agency to determine that the Marist College 51 Fulton redevelopment site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environmental, on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth on secret declaration for an unlisted action dated June 15th, 2017.
Second. Moved in seconded. That the planning board as lead agency determined that Marist College 51 Fulton redevelopment site plan would not have significant adverse effect on the environment, and no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated June 15th, 2017. Call the question, those in favor. Aye. Posed. Motion carries 7-0.
I move this planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Marist College 51 Fulton redevelopment site, subject to 1 through 7, and should be add, anything about the oak tree?
Yep. Would have to do with the tree, and a discussion with Eric has the notes on that, and nine would have to do with the signs.
Flashing lights, yeah.
And the four flashing lights, signs.
Okay. Have a second? Okay. Moved in seconded. Call the question, those in favor. Aye. Posed. Motion carries 7-0.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Ryan. I'm an architect with the Skim McCormick Findeurs here in Poughkeepsie, New York. I'd like to present to you what we're proposing to do to spruce up 51 Fulton Street. Here on the left-hand side are images of how the building resides today. It is a combination of fluted split-face concrete block with a standing seam false mansard with punch windows, large overhead coiling doors, and two small areas of glass storefront. What we're proposing to do is to remove the mansard roof and open up the second floor, the overhead garage doors, the existing storefront with much more glazing. Unfortunately, this area faces southward, so we have a lot of daylight to deal with, especially for the art studios. So we're proposing to include a flat canopy and some solar controlled sun shades on the second floor. We would propose to reskin the second floor coat of non-split-face concrete block with Duraplex, which is a finish that would give it a monolithic appearance, rather than the individual scored concrete block minutes. We're also proposing to recote the top of the parapets and do an increased enhanced-sized coping above the main entrance. We're also adding, for handicap accessibility, an elevator that would be visible from the facade. We will be, again, coating that with a similar finish, so it has a monolithic appearance rather than the concrete block, insulating it and providing the same coping cap. The remainder of the building, we don't, we're not proposing to do anything other than re-point as necessary, repair as necessary, and give a fresh coat of paint, which would be in this gray tone here. All of the metals that we're proposing, the storefront system, the flat canopy, the sun shades, and the coping, would all be in this dark bronze, dark gray color. And then, where we have the Duraplex finish, we're gonna add a pop of some red in a tone similar to this. We're still waiting for the manufacturer's colors, but we're looking to do something in a red tone. Here, you can see an image of the overhead doors. They will be all glass, so they'll bring in daylight to the art studios. And in the third bay, we'll be doing a storefront system with an egress door, which would be required by code from that area. So in all of this location right here is the extent of the interior renovations that would be occurring from here and backward. The remainder of the building is still being used for the storage and warehouse purposes. We also propose to include the paint finishing on the parking lot sides. So if you're parking up on the upper area towards the east or on the lower area towards the west, you will still see a fresh coat of paint on all of the metal and concrete block surfaces.
And the rear of the building will just remain the same?
The rear of the building at this time.
North side. Yeah. Okay. This is just concrete block?
Concrete block and metal, you know, corrugated metal. Storage bins, things like that.
What is that board down there?
This was what we had submitted with your package, and it shows that we are painting the surfaces of the other elevations. Okay?
Can you point to where the maroon color trim is gonna be?
The maroon is the surface that's going to be going on the second floor, where we're removing the mansard roof.
Okay.
Where will the elevator?
The elevator is internal. It's set back about 25 feet, and so you won't see it at the facade. It'll be distant from the facade.
All the mechanicals will be on the roof or on the...
Some of the mechanicals will be on the roof.
They'll be enclosed in...
Yes. We are just getting the submittals on those items right now, so once we get those, we'll be able to determine the sizes and the heights of screening that will be required.
So make sure we get the screening. All right.
So garage doors will have any, I don't know, protection or anything like that, or they're gonna be clear, see-through?
They're clear see-through, yes. Just like they would be storefront window, but this will allow Marist to do an open-air art gallery if they wanted to.
Okay, that was my next, okay.
Yes.
All right. So they actually open?
Yes.
And they open the arch?
These two right here open all the way, yes.
That's kinda neat. That's kind of neat. Wow, okay. Well, do we accept the architecture as presented?
Second?
Moved in second. Call the question laws in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing this. It'd be nice. Hey, you're good to go. All right.
The next application is Maris College Steel Plant?
Okay. Yeah, 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 okay, all right. So if I may, I'll do a quick introduction of this project.
Just before you start, I just want to say that in this particular application, we're going to open a public hearing, and we're going to adjourn it to July 6. We're going to be holding a special meeting on July 6 for the purpose of this application. And we do have a quorum that's available for that meeting, so we're all set with that.
Thank you for that nomination.
I understand that you want to give us a preview of the architecture tonight because the architect is here, so that we can see that. And when we do the special meeting, we'll have seen the architecture, and then we can do architectural review. But the architect being here, I save a little dollar, some money, we'll have seen it tonight.
Got to pay for those signs, those flashing signs.
Right.
Deeply appreciated.
Does that sound fair to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, great. Proceed, please.
So, thank you. The project overview, as a reminder, is the renovation in addition to our Steel Plant Studios. This incorporates a 13,000 square foot renovation of the existing space, along with about a 38,000 square foot addition to that structure. The new space is largely dedicated to our fashion program, which, as you may know, is a very successful program at the college with over 400 students, and programs now are not only in Poughkeepsie, but in New York City and in Paris, and it's really expanding tremendously. The key spaces in this project include new fashion studio spaces, maker space, including 3D printers, laters, cutters, et cetera, for the fashion and the arts programs, new digital labs for those same programs, a cafe, and an enclosed winter garden space, which will be very nice, renovated areas for the arts programs generally within the existing footprint of the current structure, and gallery spaces to be shared between the arts and the fashion programs. On this project team is, again, John Andrews and Tony McConnell, who's here from Robert Amstern Architects. So I'll turn it over to John first.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is John Andrews. With Rodi Salkin Andrews, we're the engineers for the project. The existing Steel Plant Studio is a small building here. I think you're all familiar. This parking lot is there today. There is a rather large concrete walkway that comes down and goes out the south end. We were here a number of years ago and got approval for what was then the Steel Plant Studio landscape enhancement and parking. Now we are proposing an addition on the north, the east, and the south sides of the existing steel plant. We're going to kind of wrap those sides of the building. We are going to modify that main walkway. We're going to now route traffic through the existing parking. We worked with the fire district. We're going to give them a way out. One of the comments that Mr. Lern had was about modifying this here to act more as a driveway and get DOT. We've discussed these things with DOT. They will be in the DOT permit, and we, the next generation drawings will have a revised walkway and driveway out so the fire truck can turn without leaving the paved surface. We are going to not change the building. The building, as you all know, runs right along Route 9. We are going to add a small Maris-type sitting wall with some decoration because there's some exterior space here that's related to arts that they want to maintain. We're also going to install a plaza here that kind of mirrors the plaza across that we created for Natural Science and Allied Health to kind of tie this node together because now we have two rather large academic complexes right here. The parking lot will basically remain the same. We are losing some spaces as a consequence of this action. There will be a full sidewalk. And I think it's, sometimes it's easier to look in this particular case, and I'm not usually the big proponent, but the landscaping plan, because it kind of makes things, gives you a better understanding. You can see the plaza. It's a little exaggerated here. The architects have come up with a different pattern that mirrors across the street very nicely. So that will be here. There'll be a small sitting wall, again, mirroring across the street, and with the numerous lights in it so it kind of illuminates the area. There'll be a main entry plaza, another small sitting wall. There'll be a sidewalk along the parking. And then this area here is kind of like arranged as a scenic garden. It's somewhat isolated, taking advantage of the walls that we constructed before. We do have some storm drainage in there. You can see the exterior space here. And the only oddity, we're adding a small egress door there and sidewalk. The landscaping, again, will mimic what was pretty much there before. Believe it or not, we were able to save a lot of the evergreens that were out there, and we transplanted them at the north campus. So effective use of our landscape material. But other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think that the dramatic parts of this are the architecture. There are two eyeball items. We need to relocate a sanitary sewer. We have worked with Mr. Lern and your steward superintendent. I think we've reached a meeting of the minds. We're in the process of fine-tuning the drawings. We acknowledge we need border health, and we are working toward that goal also. We also have a main gas line that we have to relocate. And we will be relocating that with Central Hudson's cooperation. They've been on board. So we're moving all that stuff out and around. The rest of it is pretty standard. Water service connection, the existing sewer service is not going to change. Storm drainage, we are adding another bioretention area. We are also in the process, we did get Mr. Lern's comments, we're enhancing our topo, and we've resurveyed the area, so we're going to be able to address all his concerns. And I think we've been able to stage this so that this summer, we will lose this parking lot in its entirety. But come the new school year, we'll be able to replace a little, we'll be able to reopen about 50% of it to the students and still be able to construct this building. So we're trying to keep our core parking here. And the last portion of this is, if you're all familiar with Maris, we've acquired over the years all these little bits and pieces of property, including the old Beck Place right-of-way. Part of this action is we will be consolidating all those into one lot. So all this now will be on one lot. We have been in front of your zoning board of appeals. We need two variances, both for, coincidentally, front yards, because we have a front yard up here on Beck Place, which remains in town hands. So we need a small variance here. And we have another one here, because we have all this frontage on Route 9. Your zoning administrator has decided it's all front yard, so we need a small variance here for the building. The ZBA, we presented, but they could not take action because you are the lead agency under Seeker. We are on the agenda for July 10, so hence the request for a July 6 special meeting, hopefully to close Seeker, and then we'll get our variances and be able to submit for final. So with all that being said, I will turn this over to the architect. This is Tony McConnell from Robert Amstern in the city, and he'll be able to walk you through the architecture.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tony McConnell. I work with Robert Stern Architects. This is the second project that I've worked with Maris on. I'm going to do a quick walkthrough of the building, show you the exterior, show you some perspectives, give you an idea of what this architecture is about. So as they mentioned before, the existing building is here, and we're going to wrap it with an L. The art program primarily is going to be the existing building. We're going to gut that. We're going to re-clad the, not re-clad, refinish the exterior walls with new insulation. We're going to refinish the roofs with new insulation, waterproof everything, make it nice and sound. And then we're going to add this two-story building on the outside edge. As you can see, you come in the main building here. We have a L-shaped hallway that separates the old building from the new building. We have most of our large labs in the south, some typical classrooms, standard classrooms on the east side. We created a double-height space in the middle of this L that kind of is the plaza between the existing building and the new building. This is the winter garden. It's a double-height space, large clear-story windows. We really expect that to be a very vibrant place for the school and the students. We come up the second floor. We have two ways to get up, two means of egress ways up. We have a stair here and a stair here. But we also have this grand stair that's going to be very prominent on the south side of the winter garden. We're going to do some very interesting things with perforated metal panels. And we're going to actually use those to get up as the railings along the grand stair. So as you stand in this winter garden and look south, you have this beautiful stair that comes up. And in a minute, I'll show you some other places that we're going to use this perforated panels. Anyway, on the second floor, we have a very similar situation. We have a hallway that kind of fits your L. The north side, where we get the wonkiness from the existing building, we're going to use for our storage and mechanical spaces, electrical rooms, that kind of thing. But then on the south side, again, we're going to have more studios. This is primarily the fashion program up here. We're proposing a series of movable partitions so that they can open these things up and really walk between the places kids can see their other students work. They're going to be pinable, so they can pin all their stuff up on top of it. People can see the stuff. You can really move in and out, open it up, get it real airy. We have some resource labs in this narrower spot over here because we needed to accommodate the offices. All of these spaces have very tall, nine-foot-tall windows. It's going to be a lot of light in these rooms, obviously classroom. That's important to us. This is our roof. We have two mechanical wells on the south side and on the north side. Those are going to screen the very large mechanical items. You can see the winter garden and the end over here are both going to have green roofs. We really want to try to work with a storm runoff, all of that kind of stuff. The existing building here, like I said, we're going to redo the whole roof, put insulation back on. It's a primary goal for us to make sure that that building is much more energy-efficient than it is currently. We have some skylights into that winter garden so that you're going to get a lot of light in that space. Okay, we're going to move on to the exterior. I mentioned those perforated panels.
I'm sorry, could you just bring that board...
Of course I can.
A little further forward. Ah, good. Are you okay?
Is that okay?
Can you guys see it?
Don't worry about me.
Okay. Okay. Primary goal for the new building was to create a industrial-feeling building that looked like it had been there for a while. Maris has a beautiful campus. Most of their buildings really do look like they have stood the test of time. We wanted to continue that, but we also wanted to break from some of the more common things that they have campus with, on campus with the stone. We really wanted to go with brick. The existing steel plant is brick. We think it's a great example of traditional building in an industrial way. So we've done the east side and the south side in a very traditional peered brick building, simple corbeling along the top. We have a standing seam zinc roof. It'll be very, very similar to what's across the street at the Natural Science Building. And then we put in these very large pane windows. They won't be individually pane, but they're going to look like steel windows. We're going to work with a product that's going to allow us to get thermally broken, very energy-efficient, but still resemble traditional steel windows. Along with that, we wanted to have some moments of excitement. So on the very far north side and on the very far west side, we've added some very large area of glass curtain wall. We're covering those with these perforated metal screens. So you're going to get this, if you're standing inside, you're going to be able to see out fairly well. You'll get some obscuring, but for the most part, you're going to see straight out. As you're coming, looking from the outside of the building, you're going to be able to see the patterns in this perforated metal panel. It's going to provide some dynamic shadows and some exciting moments that kind of contrast against the traditional building, but really give it some fun excitement that will follow along with an art and fashion building, the program that they have. On the north and the south side, we have the existing building, which is one story here and one story here. We're going to primarily keep that the same. We're going to renovate that. We will have to replace one wall, but we're going to replace it with the exact same kind of brick. It's going to look that same old feel. That's mostly because we want to get some larger windows into the offices in there. You can see on the west, this is that glass box with the perforated metal panels. The same on the north side. And then these are the clear-story windows into that winter garden. So you can see there's a lot of light going on in there. Here's some renderings. This is looking basically right in front of the Natural Science Building towards the southwest. Main entry is here. You can see those panels again. And this is the south side. Again, you see that glass box that really gives a nice contrast to the traditional building. A lot of light in. This will be a senior studio for the fashion program, so they're going to have a very prime spot to do their work. Brought a material board with me so we can talk about what we're going to use for this. This brick that we're proposing to use, again, it's a very traditional kind of brick. It's all hand-struck. It's not the extruded cut. We really want it to look historic. We're going to use the zinc roof again. Like I said, if you go over and look at the Natural Science Building, it's going to be almost identical to that. The punch windows that are meant to look like steel windows are going to be a dark charcoal black. We're going to use a dark gray for the curtain wall system. We're going to use a similar dark gray. We have some soffits where the overhangs on those glassy parts are. We're going to use a metal panel for those. Those will be a dark gray as well. And then the perforated panels will be just a little bit lighter so you do get some contrast. All of our accents, cornices, steel, sills, anything like that that we need for waterproofing will be out of a precast concrete.
Do you have a board that depicts the landscaping in order?
I don't have anything for landscaping.
You could, well, if you could put back up the view, it's the northbound lane of nine.
Yep.
Yeah. I guess, well, my question would be, do we not have a separate landscape plan?
Well, we don't have one today.
I don't have one today.
Can we have one for the second?
We can use this.
I can bring it on the second.
Well, I mean, I just, this is just me, my comments. I mean, I think it's a terrific looking building. I want to make sure, and this is obviously a board's decision.
This is the landscaping that I'm proposing.
Okay.
The landscaping that's shown on there was, I think, a meeting for somewhat clarity in the building.
Yeah, well, and that's, and that's kind of where I'm going with it. So, I mean, I don't necessarily think that, you know, it's a good-looking building, gone to, Maris has gone to a lot of efforts to design this thing, and a lot of efforts have been put in. I don't necessarily think we should have a lot of large trees along nine that are otherwise going to obscure that view. So we should think about that before the next special meeting.
We don't want, we don't want to hide, we don't want to hide the...
I don't believe we're planting any large trees.
That's certainly not in our plan either.
Okay, good. If you could show us that next, in a couple of weeks, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, let me see. I moved that we opened the public hearing. Moved in second. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries seven zero. No one signed up to talk and speak on this application, so now I'm going to move that we adjourn the public hearing to July 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. here at Town Hall.
Sure.
We've moved in second. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries seven zero. I don't know if it worked. I think we could just wait till the special meeting for our comments, or unless anybody has something really pressing that they need to... Andy, anything you want to say? They've got your comments.
I don't really have anything additional to add. Mr. Andrews addressed pretty much all my questions.
So I'll move that the planning board determine the application is incomplete for secret review and waterfront consistency determination pending further elaboration on the proposed development and its potential effects.
Sure.
Moved in seconded. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries seven zero. And move the planning board defer further action on the site plan subject to the following, 1 through 10. I think that's it. We got a second from Ed. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries seven zero. We've had the architecture presentation, so next two weeks when we meet, we'll see that, and if we have a couple of the questions, we can go with it. And if we have a couple of questions, we can go with it.
They're going to leave the renderings and the other materials.
We are prepared to leave them here with you, as well as the ones from Kim Ryan. So we'll just put them right behind your dais over there.
Yeah, we'll collect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're good. We will see you on the 6th at 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. This is going to be a great, you're going to get a lot of great use out of this building. I just know it.
Both of them.
Both of them, but this one with the students and the fashion and all that. I think it's going to be a wonderful working space. Okay.
Am I going to have the opportunity to plug in and exhibit?
Yes, Mike.
Michael, how are you? Oh, thank you. Justin's been a pleasure. There he goes. Yeah, thank you.
What am I doing? Oh, yeah.
Going to be a fight here? What was that look about?
You should look here.
What was that look?
You guys are going to have to share.
You can just email it.
Did you get this in a word version?
Yes, yes.
One of those parachute faces.
It's nice to see.
Planning board handles a lot. There's no separate. Yeah. We have an approved plan, like the city. They have their own water. We don't have.
Thank you.
Yep, that's the plan. Somebody is.
Looking at all the people who's stuck in here. What the hell's going on over here?
To be the point.
Well, I think there's two colors. There's two colors.
Yeah, it gives us some interest, including this kind of peak here. Yeah, great. He's got it kind of mirrored.
Right, how you doing?
Something, I'm busy thinking of the spaces in between, right?
Forty-five minutes at home.
Range Rover?
I was just saying the same thing.
The Range Rover is on the road.
He's based on Creeksville.
What about, what about?
It's one of the rich Dutchess students going to school.
What about the Porsche in the parking?
I'm not rich and I have a Range Rover. What do you say?
They really make, you know, all-American.
That's like an opening. That's sort of.
We need to put like an 86 Honda Civic or something in here.
That looks pretty nice. Creek Road Apartment, secret review, rezoning recommendation to the town board and site plan hearing for proposed site rezoning by the town board from BN Business Neighborhood to the RM Residence Multifamily District and a site plan application to the planning board is amended for 31 apartments in one building of three stories. 8492 Creek Road, Zone BN Neighborhood Business District, 5.18 acres, unlisted action JPJR Holdings LLC owner. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. We're the engineer for the applicant, who is John Page. He's sitting to my left. To my right is Mike Alberta, who is the architect for the project here. Mr. La Perch, just before I get started, I've been coming here periodically for, I don't know, since about 2000. And I've always found you to be very fair, and I appreciate what you've done for the town. I'm also a resident here, so I applaud you and your efforts and dedication to the board.
You're miraculous. I'm going to crawl under the table.
So this project is a 5.18 acre parcel. It's located on the east side of Creek Road across from the Stewart Shops. It is currently in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District, and what we're proposing is 31 apartment units. We've approached the town board and were referred to the planning board, and we've worked with the planning board over the course of some time now to get to this point where we have this layout, which we're presenting to you this evening. The rezone would be to the Residence Multifamily Zoning District, which permits this particular use that we are proposing. We have approximately three acres of site disturbance associated with this project. We've got one longer building now, as opposed to what we've had in the past. Sixty-six parking spaces. Our grading and drainage plan was basically established by establishing an overland flow towards vegetated swales, pea gravel diaphragms, bioretention areas for treatment prior to discharge to the east of the site, which is, the elevation falls off down there, heads down to the Fall Kill Creek, and there's a hundred-year flood plain down there as well. For water and sewer, we're connecting to municipal available services that are along Creek Road on the west side of the site.
So if I may speak about the architecture a little bit, the last time we were here, I appreciated the comments that the board gave, and we went back and kind of took them to heart and kind of redid the building, as you see. You can see the Creek Road elevation. If you, the rendering that I gave you, if you flip that over, you'll see that one. But you see, we took the Creek Road elevation and we polished it up a little bit and gave it a little bit, a little bit more attractive for what you're going to see. Zoom, borrow the mic here. You can see what we, what I was talking about here. This is a Creek Road. If you're coming from Dutchess Community College this way. So we took this elevation on this, and it's a shorter elevation, a little bit lower now. Plus, we gave it a little bit more of an architectural detail on Facing Creek Road. So it's not a blank wall. There's a lot of going on there now. The bay window and what you see here, that's actually the stairway. So it's really not a living space, but we did that just to give it a little bit of character. So, you know, I know some of your comments, we took that, we varied some of the detail, varied some of the signing, a little bit, a little extra on the signing. And we gave it a little bit more, a little bit more character by varying some of the siding. Now, the building is, one of your comments was, one of the members were about the repetition and the symmetry of the building. We maintained that because we thought that that really worked well with the project. Even though we still varied, even with the symmetry, we varied the materials on the, so that the elements may be the same, but the materials are going to be different on it, so they'll give it a different look. So this is what you'll see if you're coming from Duchess. This is what you'll see if you're coming from the rail trail. So this would technically be the rear of the building, as I'm throwing it on the floor. So this will technically be the rear of the building, but you can see, this is that one-story section I was talking about. You can see that we've treated the entire thing all the way around now so that it's, it's a pleasant, you know, it's pleasing all the way around now. Same with the back, is we've created it and with a lot of different materials and we're varying it. The materials will be a hardy board. It'll be very maintenance-free, long-lasting, no issues, like some of the landscaping, as you can see what we're doing. Any other questions or thoughts, comments?
I think we'll, I think we'll come back to that if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Let me see. Let me start. We'll start with Eric, then we'll go to Andy, and then we'll open the public.
Let's see. The staff are, in concurrence with the planning board, we used a planning consultant, Liz Axelson and Maris Associates on this. I would talk to them quite a bit at length about the review, and that concurs that the project's probably ready for a secret determination and a conditional approval, and Liz has some additional details to add.
I'll try to be quick. The project evolved from being an approximately 40-unit, two-lot, nine-acre proposal to being 31 units, one building. And previous comments that we had about zoning issues have all been resolved. The density now comply. You don't need a building separation distance setback. And your front yard setback complies. Most of our comments that remain are site plan issues, you know, nailing down some of the environmentally protective measures for species, et cetera, and maybe beefing up the landscaping in certain areas and other, you know, technical details. And so to that end, we prepared a fully AF Part II board to consider and a draft seeker negative declaration. And we've recommended that the planning board may feel ready to go ahead with the seeker negative declaration and an RM rezoning recommendation to the town board. And then we'll put off dealing with site plan until later. The town board's hopeful rezoning.
Eric, you got it? We're only dealing with the one parcel? Okay, Eric, your turn.
Okay. So Andy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I can chime in a few things here. So this project does require a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We've been working with the applicant's engineer to work through some of the outstanding comments. I think we're very close on that. They are, they've relocated from the previous design. They relocated their stormwater management practices to the rear of the site. We do have a few minor concerns with the placement of those practices, and we feel that some minor tweaks to those practices could alleviate those concerns. Also, in speaking with Carol Knapp, there's some grading that extends down the slope quite a distance that's related to construction of those practices. And we feel that it may be possible to rearrange the pretreatment area of one of those practices to try to save some of that grading and possibly reduce some of that disturbance. All the rest of our comments are really details that need to be addressed in terms of, you know, water sewer, just some additional details that may be required. But for the most part, I think we're getting there.
Thank you.
There were a couple of comments in the packet. The DEC had had some comments about endangered species, in particular, as species of turtle. And the planning board's wetland consultant referenced those comments. She's comfortable with the negative declaration and called out some additional requirements for consultation with the DEC going forward. And those are in your packet.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Have a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second. We open up public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And then no one signed up to speak on this application. I think we will adjourn it to... When do you think? It's a ZBA. Could go back to downtown. September? We're going to come up with a date here.
Make it September.
Make the September regular meeting.
I'll look up the date.
July.
I have town board schedule.
Wait, we need a planning board meeting in September.
Twenty-first. Twenty-first? All right, so I move we adjourn the public hearing to September 21st, 2017. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Eric, let me go around the board in case we have some questions. Start with Ben. Anything, or, I'm sorry, Carl?
Not a lot. The architecture looks great.
Yeah, I thought so.
You fixed that blank wall facing Creek Road, and it looks a lot better overall. Mentioned the reduced slope.
Oh, yeah, the residences, I wasn't sure what type of landscaping you had there, the other residential houses there. I'm just concerned about light and noise spillage to the, and headlights especially coming in and shining in the windows of those residences.
On the...
On the northwest side.
Right, on the northwest side, we're staggering white pines, and we're also incorporating cedar trees, cedar tree groves into that.
Okay.
We have comment about maybe beefing that up a little bit more in that area as well from the planner.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that's, because that's where everybody's going to park headlights in and point right at the house at night.
And if I can, the elevation that's facing Creek Road, there are actually no part of the residence there on that. It's utility and staircase. That's actually closest to Creek Road on the one side.
Okay.
So the windows that you see are either in the stairway or they're in the utility room.
Oh, we're going to push him to September 21st.
All right. And lastly, I assume it is a one-bedroom, so I assume you're targeting some college students as well. So I think we talked about a bike rack. I wasn't sure if I saw it on the plans.
We haven't provided it yet. I was going to talk to John about that. I think we've got to find a good spot for it, and then we've got to start considering it. People are going to actually leave them there overnight. Do we need to cover them? There's some logistics that we need to work through.
Sometimes, yeah. I don't know if there's any, probably no spot for a, I mean, if they're on the bottom floor, they can bring it inside.
There may be, and there's some storage areas for each of the units, if I understand.
Each first floor, the storage units, on each floor, where you see the staircases, where the stairways are, each unit there, each floor has a small storage area.
Oh, underneath the stair?
Yes. The areas on the second and third floor are actually used for utilities.
Okay.
There will be a small spot for water meters in each of those, but the rest can be used for storage on the first floor.
That's just something to keep in mind. I mean, the county bike and pedestrian plan recommends the inverted U type of rack, if that.
And it's proximity to the walkway and the biking and all that.
But somewhere, yeah.
It's a good idea to have a, assume a couple of bike racks.
With the proximity to the walkway, I'm sure that's.
It's near the walk.
A lot of people want to use their bikes.
Yep. Near the trail, as well as the, as well as getting to class if it's students dressing there.
Thank you. Ben, anything at this time?
My only question is, with emergency services, sorry, emergency services, there's adequate, you checked with the fire department, there's adequate.
We've had conversations with Fairview at this point, and there's no outstanding comments at this point.
Okay.
We've, we actually provided a series of Knox boxes along here. They've actually asked us that we can reduce that down to three, one at each end and then one in the middle. Also, we've provided turning templates within our plan set that show how their, two of their fire, larger fire trucks can navigate through the site.
Okay, thank you. Mike, just thought of something, and I wish I had thought of this earlier. Given that they're one-bedroom apartments and you're going to be attracting students, is there going to be onsite management or some kind of adult parental control on the site to try and manage the residents? For lack of a better word.
I think it's going to be cost prohibitive for students at this point. Excuse me. So empty nesters, I think, would be a prime candidate for something like this.
But I would think that the proximity to Duchess and some of the parents may have the means to, you know, come on, the rent. I just don't want it to become a, not such a nice place.
Nor do I.
Right. So I was just wondering, maybe next time you could talk about your ideas, how to prevent.
Eight cameras minimum.
Eight cameras minimum?
Correct.
All right. We could talk about that. That's a concern that I have.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
With Range Rovers there, it's a good classic.
Don't forget the Porsche.
And the Porsche.
These are all one-bedroom apartments too, right?
Yes.
And from the picture, it would appear that you're going to plan on a lot of young children as well. I understand. Render is a discretion. Sure. But with that in mind a bit, are there, is there fencing around some of the steep areas and the pool?
and the pool area, you know, the proposed plunge area and that kind of thing? Have you thought at all about that from a safety precaution?
We haven't shown anything. At this point, we can, we can consider and talk about some of that.
There have been some interesting cases of kids, you know, jumping into wetlands that they really shouldn't be in, and some of them rather deep.
These will be dry.
Totally? Okay. And what about the steepness of the hill? Any concerns there?
Generally, we're grading at three-on-one, which is a thirty-three percent slope. It's not a tremendous mountain, but...
Promise it will be dry. Thank you.
Rocko? I'm good at this time, thank you.
Same, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Peter?
The, considering the building, the design is very clever, and what you've done with the west elevation, you know, I think really, it looks terrific.
Thank you.
Did a great job.
They were listening when you mentioned it.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I took your comments to heart, and we tried to, tried to come back and, what I'm hearing, I think we did, with the building that you guys would like.
Definitely.
When you come back, can you, you'll bring samples of what you're using outside? Because is that natural, like a natural wood that's gonna be there, or?
It's, it's gonna be a synthetic product.
Okay, but it's gonna...
We're looking for, we're looking for strength, durability, and zero maintenance.
What color?
But looking, but the appearance will be a natural...
The code for vinyl?
The colors, the actual names and numbers, but they're all gonna be in...
It could be natural.
Colors, yellows.
Cool.
Yellows.
All right, great, no, looks great.
Thank you.
And you'll have a chance, once we get to the final phase here, to come in with an architectural review and the samples and, you know, the actual materials and so on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together a sample board when the time comes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed? Oh, one comment I wanna make, where the, as far as the rezoning, is that we're only talking about the, this parcel. We're not gonna be doing anything with the darker green parcel?
That, that actually is part of the parent parcel. It's five point one-eight acres.
Okay.
There was another sliver parcel behind there that was included previously. That's what Liz was mentioning before.
Okay.
But that is not within the application anymore.
Got it, perfect.
Actually, that, I think that's been the case, the five point one-eight acre only parcels, might have been the case since about September two thousand and sixteen, so...
I think you're right. Just wanna make, you clarified it here, so there's no mistake as to what we're really recommending.
Yep, good.
If I may, two comments. One, Peter, thanks for your good ideas on that. There is a similar kind of street line apartment complex on nine D as you just go down off of nine, and it is just what you didn't want on this, and it really looks good.
It's called the warehouse, warehouse end.
Yeah, no way.
Thanks. Okay, I move the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the Creek Road apartment changes to zone of five point one-eight acres, tax parcel number seven-three-five-seven-oh-five to the RM zoning district, and the site plan approval would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for the unlisted action dated June...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of two thousand and seventeen, prepared by the planning board, planning consultant, Morris Agency Associate Engineering and Surveying Consultants, PPLC. Thank you very much. Second, anybody?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. I call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding the change of the zoning of five point one-eight acres, tax parcel ID seven-three-five-seven-oh-five to RM zoning district for this project pursuant to a referral from the town board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And I move that the planning board defer action on the site plan application pending action by the town board and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from the town department and agencies as indicated by the planning board, including but not limited to... She still hasn't changed this, you know? She's back to that known...
Sorry, I was expecting you to...
One through thirteen.
One through thirteen.
This is up the format. That's all I can tell you, and I don't have to fix it.
And I would add respectfully...
All right, Chris.
I through X I I I?
Right.
I respectfully submit that we had another one...
Second.
Comments made this evening?
And also for the comments made this evening, which would be number X.
IV.
IV. As some of us would know...
Second again.
Fourteen.
Okay. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Good, great. Hopefully get the rezoning, and we'll see you in September.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Proceedurally, along with that positive referral, will the town board put us on the agenda, or do we need to request?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As Peter said, and I, and Ed couldn't agree more with how it evolved since you first came in, and listened to everything we said, and you did, it's gonna...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's right, that's, that was a good call, good call. Okay, let's see, A four, River Point Residential and West Park Professional Office Buildings, update discussion of site plan.
It's just an adjournment.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're not here. So it's not an update, it's not a revision, it's an adjournment. So the planning board, I move the planning board adjourn the site plan and aquatic resource permit hearing to September twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, subject to re-advertization of the public hearing for a revised submittal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Move around along. At this point, I need a motion to suspend the rules if anyone has any comments on any other agenda items.
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, suspend the rules, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on any other agenda items? Seeing no one, I move we resume the rules.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Oakwood Commons, Homewood Suites, flight plan review and waterfront consistency determination for a proposed amended site plan for a lot, for lot one at Oakwood Commons for a Homewood Suites Hotel consisting of four stories with one hundred and thirteen rooms, South Road, Zone BH Highway Business District with Business Park overlay and WD-1 Waterfront District One. Two point seven-seven acres unlisted action, Oakwood Partners LLC owner.
Good evening, Ken Casamento from the LRC Group.
Hello.
As you know, we were here before, and one I would like to say as well, best of luck. Thank you. It's been great working with you on multiple applications in the past.
Thank you very much.
As you know, we've made a presentation before to the board. I wasn't gonna walk through a full presentation, but we have a couple things that we've worked with the applicant and developer to modify slightly, I think, to the benefit of, whoa, to the benefit of the project. In the rear of the building, originally we had the sports court tucked in by the pool area, and we had the putting area over closer to the parking lot. One of the things the applicant really wanted to do was kind of make it more of an outdoor experience for the guests and area, so we were looking to work with the expansion and kind of creating a more outdoor patio space area. So we've flip-flopped those for a couple reasons. One, to bring that kind of activity a little further away. It is netted, fully encapsulated by netting, so we don't have to worry about any ball getting out into a parking lot or anything like that. It's fully planted around the outside to kind of tuck it into the landscape, but we were able to create more of an open space, as we discussed before, having walked through. This is kind of a lounge area here in the back of the building, and would great walk out into a nice feature out here. We have a pergola with a barbecue that's out there for residents to use, as well as two fire pits and some associated stamped concrete walkways and decorative planting there. Otherwise, nothing has changed from the last time we've been in front of the board. We did meet today with the building department briefly to start talking about future steps, and I know one of the comments with regard to ADA was also something that they had relative parking spaces, and we're talking about relocating two down here. We do have two that are up here that are close to the front entrance, we're working at potentially putting two across the street as well, so we'll end up having, into this portion here, the building department wanted to see it a little closer, but we're working through trying to make sure all that works. We were a little concerned about having to go across the main drive area, so we preferred it to be over here. So we'll work with staff and the engineer to finalize those details as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Andy, anything on this?
I mean, I wasn't, I'm not sure what was reviewed the last time, because I missed the first submission, but I mean, we have, you know, comments, most of them are technical nature. We had commented on the ADA spaces as well. We did note that there is a dark area on the photometric, you know, the site entrance. I think Eric mentioned, noted that as well. That should be addressed. The site does, the plan does require a stormwater pollution prevention plan and its BDS coverage. However, since it had previously approved SWIP, they will have to do very little because the DEC has agreed that it doesn't, it meets the current requirements because the already, the plan, previously approved plan already showed a hotel in that location, so they'll just have to do an addendum to the SWIP, which we've received and reviewed. And other than that, we just have technical comments related to sewer water and erosion controls, so, thank you.
And if I may, real quickly, Mr. Chairman, as far as the lighting goes, we're working with, we wanted to add the building lightings. Rick here from Base Four Architecture, the architect for the project, we're working with that to integrate their building lighting and some of the canopy light into the site lighting as well that's there, so we can address some of those things.
Good. Eric?
There's a handful of comments that we'll consider, but essentially, we feel it's ready for secret determination and conditional approval if the board sees fit.
Good, thank you. Ben, I'll start with you. Ed?
Yeah, there was only two comments that was going back. Based on last year's snow, I mean, that area where you're putting, that area where you're putting a hotel was full of snow last year, so I assume you're gonna find some other place to put some snow.
Sorry, putting back on. We did identify some things. I think at this time, it was pushed here because it was at a convenience that wasn't being used. Mr. Kaminski, who's here, has a store, plan in place with their stall removal, so I'm sure if we exceed it, it'll be removed off-site as appropriately.
That's what I was wondering, you'd have to go to trucking it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Lastly...
Can we add a map note to that effect?
We can do that, yes.
Thank you.
I don't like it, but what can I say?
Well, it's got the wrong brand hotel on it anyway.
I don't know, it looks like Paramus.
Rocko? I hope there's no comments at this time. Brian?
No, no additional comments, looks great.
Peter?
Did I hear you say that you were gonna respond to the county's concerns about the photometrics?
Yes, we are, we're working with the lighting to make sure we don't have dark spots and address all that.
And the intensity of the lighting was another concern they hadn't expressed.
Yes.
Okay.
Carl?
Yeah, that was my comment too, about the lighting, that's good. Also, they mentioned, the county mentioned that twenty-foot pole sign that, you know, the new, since we passed the new master plan, we're trying to minimize pole signs if we can, but I don't know if there's any way to co-locate with another existing sign there or not.
It was originally discussed during the old application, and the brand, the other brand would not allow any co-location out.
Okay.
And it was under a previous approval, so that's...
It's what it is, I guess. And then the other thing is not, I think, mine looks good. The other thing is not specific to the, to the hotel, I guess, other than that four-way intersection we talked about before. I guess you submitted a letter here, though, Mr. Kaminski, about the, about IBM's right to keep that traffic flowing, I guess, so, not much you can do in light of that. It's just, you know, cars, it's a confusing intersection because there's stop signs in four different directions, but not all lanes. Some lanes are passed through. But IBM has reserved the right to prevent that from being a four-way stop.
They don't, they don't wanna make you guys late for work.
There's fewer and fewer of us there, so you would think it'd be amenable to...
I wasn't going there.
Four-way stop these days, but, in any case, it is what that is as well.
Okay, thank you. Glad to see something happening on the site. I don't know if it was a crystal ball, but having put all this in place years ago, it's good planning. Okay. Ed? Want me to?
I already, oh, did you get everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. I move the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code two-ten-dash-one-fifty-one-D.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code section two-ten-one-dash-one-fifty-one-D. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move the planning board as lead agency hereby determine that the Oakwood Commons Homewood Suites amended site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for the unlisted action dated June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
I moved in second that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the Oakwood Commons Homewood Suites amended site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie approved local waterfront revitalization program because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such programs.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, the planning board determines that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie approved water, local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP, because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such program. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Oakwood Commons Homewood Site Plan subject to the following, one through...
XI.
Eleven.
One through eleven, and the map note about the, taking the snow off-site.
Yeah, the snow off-site, yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Are you prepared to do architectural review?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. When would you propose to be starting? When would you be?
ASAP, late summer, early fall. Good evening, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Rick Munis, architect with Base Four Architects and Engineers. Base Four Architects and Engineers is a national architect and engineering firm only dedicated to hospitality projects. We do like from seventy-five to a hundred hotels a year throughout the United States, many of them with, with this client, Bryant, the Bryant Group. Let's start with the project location. As you know, located at the west of South Road and south of Thomas Watson Road, part of Oakwood Commons complex. The project is four stories, 113 rooms. The Homewood Suite by Hilton has been designed to enhance its context with a, with the traditional yet contemporary look to what the Hilton brand is projecting. The, the first floor of the project, right, it's, it's what the, what the brand and the Hilton brand wants to project, right? Homewood Suites, it's an upscale extended stay product. Every guest room is designed as a full suite. Every, every room has their kitchen, right? The common areas are designed to embrace our guests and make them stay, right? This is not a typical stay for one, this is not a typical hotel for a one night or two nights. People come into this hotel to, to stay one week, two weeks in there. So if, if I give you a brief description of the first floor, you come in through, through South Watson, through Thomas Watson Road and to the main lobby. You go in into this space with your bestie bill at your right. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. You come in from Thomas Watson. You have your port to share. You go into the bestie bill with your front desk at your left and it's all open with your fireplace in the middle and it's all through, open space with all your amenities right there. You have what they call the lodge, which is a great and ample space for everybody to, to join and to, to rest during the afternoons when they come back from work. And it's directly connected to all the exterior components of the project. You go into the lobby and you all, from a straight shot, you see the back lodge and you see through the windows, it's a very double height spa, very nice double height space in the back. All glass in the back that you can see to the courts. You can see through the outdoor amenities that we've designed very well with the civil engineer. There's also outdoor, our client Bryant, they like to do, enhance over the prototype and do like a nice outdoor area with a trellis, barbecue areas to, to serve the, to serve the, the clients and the guests. The second, there's like 19 guest rooms on the first floor. Typical floor was going to have 30, 32 guest rooms each. They range from one, one bedroom to two bedroom suites. Like I mentioned, they all have kitchen amenities. The all, and other components and amenities of the, of the hotel are going to be the indoor pool. We have a meeting room and we have a fitness room. All access easily from the lobby. The, the overall hotel shape, if I go to the exterior and building architecture, it was designed to, to do the minimum impact to the site as possible, given that the site was already all well thought out. So what we did was we worked with the, with Hilton and what they provide to us at their guidelines for design and their guest rooms and work with the site to complement and, and enhance what we have currently there. I mean-
Terrific.
So this, this in the center here is the original pad of the, that's existing in the site right now. So what we did was we did an L-shaped building that actually, you know, like embraces that patio and creates that special area to, to serve our guests. So overall, the architecture of the building, so you would see it's using, it's using the franchise's architecture and feel, but it, we also added the natural stone veneer to match the existing buildings in the property and make the Oakwood Commons complex more unified. The actual stone that we have here, we have them on the sample boards. The exterior building, it's, it's, it's Ephesus. These are the, the colors that we're using. The colors are, are brand colors that are signature of this, of this product. And, and we have blended nicely with the selection of colors and actually worked pretty well because the current stone patterns of the buildings on site has lighter browns and gray colors that actually work well with the pattern that, of colors that we selected. So we use the, the architecture of the brand and we went ahead and enhanced this with a, with a, with a more modern portico chair. We use this version. This is an alternative for a portico chair that we've used previously with, with our owner. And it serves well because it adds security because it's all open. It adds security. It's less invasive to the, to the footprint of the building and it adds a more sophisticated and modern look to it.
How does it add security?
Because it's, it's open. It's visible. Most portico chairs have those columns and pilasters in the front and you drive in and you can't really see what's going on. So in this way, if you're parked, everything is open. You see directly to the door. You see where you have to go. So we believe it's, it's safer.
What holds it up then?
What holds it up? It, it's supported by some steel columns in the back end and suspended with steel rods from the face of the building.
Just like across the street, Orthopedic Associates.
Right. That's right.
Stick around long enough.
So that's, that's my presentation. I hope you like the building and if you have any questions, please.
Didn't they heat, I'm trying to think of Orthopedic Associates since you brought it up. Didn't we have them do special, something special underneath that so they wouldn't ice up?
We tried to, but I don't think we ever got it.
We were afraid of people coming out slipping in the dead of winter.
They'd just go back inside.
Yeah, that might have been-
Do you-
Well, that wasn't quite right.
Well, I'll go back in and get fixed.
Are you in the insurance business?
No.
Back for another X-ray.
Could you just tilt that, that the light is just hitting-
Pull the microphone down a little bit, Brian.
Just tilt that out. Perfect. I just couldn't see the, what they were talking about. Okay. Thank you.
Good. I like it. I've said this before, but on our travels, that's our hotel of choice. They take good care of you. Homewood Suites. So it's, be a nice addition to the, the set of hotels we have in the area that's growing. So it's nice.
Assume all the HVAC is screened in some way.
Yeah. They're all strategically located behind the higher parapets, so you won't be able to see them from the road.
Looks nice.
My move, we accept the architecture as presented.
Second.
Second, and call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Kaminski. He's done a nice job around this whole area and I really, leaving the board, I really appreciate all the things you've done from around the town. It looks very, very nice. Route nine looks pretty good. Thanks to you.
Much appreciated. Congratulations on your return.
Thank you.
Do you, do you want those?
Yes, please.
Here comes trouble.
Where?
Right here.
Just that one here.
Sit here, eh?
A three S.
Who are we doing next week? Anything going on?
We're just talking about the signage for this.
Can I come? I need some money.
I'll send you the meeting.
Okay.
It's gonna be boring.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, Crown Castle Verizon Communication. I thought they took you off, didn't they take you off the agenda?
They're so funny.
I could have swore. Didn't we do that? Eric?
You tried.
All right. Fairview Common Site Plan Amendment of an approved site plan for the construction of 151 unit apartment complex and 8,500 square feet of support space in three buildings, 66 Fulton Street Zoned FC, Fairview Common and P R O D Planned Residential Overlay District, 1329 five acres. Secret negative declaration adopted August 21, 2014. Site plan approval granted January 15, 2015. Signed September 16, 2015. Page Park Associates.
Oh, I didn't know you were done. Sorry, I was still reading it. Thank you. I'm Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates. The summary here actually does a pretty good job of explaining why we're here. If you recall, this project was approved several years ago and it was intended to, upon full development, include three separate multifamily residential apartment buildings. And for those of you who have drove, driven by and seen the site, the first building was, which we call Building B, I don't know, we did this completely backwards, was built and occupied in August of 2016. The second building, which is now Building C, will be occupied in August of 2017, so this year it'll be ready for occupancy. And the third building would be Building A, which was the small building over along Fulton by Cedar, by Avellows. This map is hard to see, but this is Fulton Street and this is Fairview. And this is that big rock knoll for some of you who may not have been on the board when this was approved. Avellows is here and this is the main entrance road between Avello and Page and the entrance winds you through the building. The two buildings that were constructed is Building C and Building B. The third building, yet to be built, is Building A. And this was a smaller building. I don't recall how many units was included in there, but we're proposing to create a phased site plan for this project. So we were originally planning on building all three buildings under one process. We'd like to get the financing closed on the two buildings. We have construction loans out on those and in order to do that, we need a C O. Not to belabor the process in the town, but we need to create a phased site plan. So we put the components of the site that haven't yet been complete on another phase and we can receive a C O on phase one, which would be the two buildings that we built. All of the offsite improvements have been installed, which were the sidewalks and the modifications to Fairview. All of the utilities have been installed, which is a sewer pump station. All the utility water lines, all the mains have been installed. All the stormwater improvements have been put in place. This building, the balance of the remaining work to, to erect that building would be a connection to the existing water main that's on site and the parking lot and the ancillary lighting and landscaping and so forth. But all of the main utility components to the site have been completed. The other thing that we're doing is, as part of the original site plan approval, we had approved, I just don't know why, but we had approved this stone dust path through the site. And upon reflection, we feel that it's probably not the safest thing to do to create a path up through the woods and we think it's best to just keep the residents where the housing is and keep that area that we protected, you know, that vegetated area, just simply vegetated. So we've asked to remove that from the site plan, that stone dust path. There was not a recreational requirement or anything that required us to have that on the plan. It wasn't a recreational component. So those are the two things. It's just a creation of a phased site plan, phase one and phase two, and a removal of the stone dust path on the property.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes, Kelly explained, this is, one component of this is permission not to build something. Kind of easy in its, in its request. And when you consider that the, the stone dust path is going through an area that's labeled as designated open space, I looked at it and said, yeah, why did we do that in the first place? But, so it's, it's probably not a bad idea, but certainly there's a safety aspect. It's a wooded area. It's not lighted. I don't necessarily think we need to invite students to traverse the path for safety reasons. So I think that it certainly warrants permission not to build something. The second part of it is this phasing plan, which is really just simply lines, drawing. It's being done for C O and financing purposes so they can close out construction loans for the, the other two buildings, one which is occupied, one which is yet to be occupied. And it appears that the intent is to commence construction of Building A. And Kelly's right, they sort of did things a little out of sequence. There was never a phasing plan as part of this. The idea was that they were just simply going to go and just sort of build everything. But it looks like they'll take a pause for probably about a year before they start building A. Building A is not just units, dwelling units. There's a, there's a office space and a commercial component in there as well, which was a requirement of the, the overlay district. So, but, but one of the questions that we had is what's shown on the drawing is what was originally improved, which is it shows the parking area in front of Building A and of course, Building A. But what's in the, in the field right today is not in fact picked it. And so all of that area labeled as, as phase two, this building, I, I referred to just for my own reference and I did this in the memo, it's building area phase, or Building A phase, just kind of keep it straight. It's, it's all developed at this point, pretty much all developed for parking, which they needed as construction was occurring across the site. It's proposed that that would remain in its current phase, its current condition. It's set up for parking. There is no walkway through it. There's a walkway around it to connect the sidewalk. There's a sidewalk connection that kind of swings down, that would be to the west to connect over to the sidewalk, which has been installed and in fact connects to the sidewalk all the way down to Marist. So that, that, that link exists. When you look at the original drawing, it's a pathway in front of the building once it's constructed that would also continue, you know, be connected. So, but that would be to a, to a later time. There is a, a potential, I suppose, that the pause may be longer than a year or so. And I spoke with Kelly Roy today and I suggested, and the recommendation is that if construction is not commenced by April 1 of 2019, that the applicant is required to submit an application to the board for a final plan to basically landscape and show what this is going to look like in a final form, which includes all grading, pedestrian access and lighting and landscaping and all of that. So that would be a condition of approval in, in the event the applicant decides not to go forward in, in the near term with the project. But at this point, they anticipate starting construction in round August of 2018. We would give them until April 1 of 2019 to start construction. If they don't, they have to give the planning board an application for an amended approval to show what the landscaping and the final disposition of that phase would be no later than June of the following year. So, and that would sort of put that within.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see. Ed, anything?
Well, if nothing else, can we get the Page boys to clean up all the junk that's up on that upper hill? People have been throwing junk over the side of the road up there for years.
Where?
For Fairview. The upper elevation up there has always been a mess.
Boy, we keep it clean all the time. Have you seen junk there recently?
No, I haven't been there recently. I, I know when I walked through it some years ago, it was a mess.
All the time we're over there cleaning up.
Everything's been cleared up.
Yeah. And in fact, we've asked all the adjoining property owners because there was a guy to the south of us that just dumped for years and we asked permission for it to clean his site up, which we did. So we're, we're on it.
Okay. And yeah, for safety's sake, I guess I gotta agree with that. And Neil, I guess if that's the plan, any other things?
Yeah, it seems to me to make sense to, you know, set a, a point in time where we would get a final plan for that. I don't think it's necessary to do it now because the intention is to finish off the third building. So I think that that was sort of fair.
Neil's staking the ground, huh?
I think we just need to pause, as Neil said, pause a little bit. This took a lot out of us, these two buildings. So I think we just need a break and then pick up and, and do Building A.
Is it demand there?
Excuse me?
Is it demand there?
Yeah. Yep.
Have you cut back on the deer population or?
I'm gonna take the fifth on that one. You've asked me a lot of questions over the years and I've always answered them, but I'm not gonna answer that one.
Brian?
Thank you very much.
Peter?
Building A, what is it? Can you describe what's there now?
What's there now?
Just, have you paid, actually provided the parking next to that building or is that just bare ground?
That entire, have you driven by to see it or no? Okay, so that entire circle that you see on the plan that is compasses phase A is essentially a, a parking lot that's milling, which are the broken up pieces of road.
Do you think it would be to your benefit or the benefit of the neighbors to maybe put some topsoil in there with some grass seed?
No, we actually use it for a parking lot. It's used. Yeah, yeah. In fact-
It's like a gravel.
Yeah, seal and stripe just went the other day and striped everything again, so we're keeping it, keeping it striped.
Okay.
Was there any, was there any relationship between the stone path? Did you pay the full recreation fee to the town?
We did.
That's all it has?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the stone path, I think it was just an extra amenity, but you have other amenities on a site like the, the fitness centers and the buildings and-
Yeah. If anyone wants to come see it, your people can see it.
I did get a walkthrough of one of, of one building. I did get a walkthrough of one of the one buildings, so it looks nice overall. So I guess the only question was, you know, it was next year you're gonna start building A, all right? And I also wanted to publicly thank the Page brothers for installing the antique protection fence on the Route 9 old post road mile marker.
Yep, good.
So that's great.
Hopefully you saw it.
Looks good.
This is in front of the 2323. Thank you.
Pete?
I'll wait and see. Nothing now.
I like 2323. I ate dinner there last night.
Yeah?
Yeah, it was good.
It looks nice.
Yeah, doing okay.
Thank you. Except the sidewalk.
Kelly, you're supposed to just, like, say thank you?
I just had to say.
You know?
Okay, moving my way. Let me take John off the hook, I moved.
Nah, I was just.
And Kelly. I move that the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code 210-151D.
Second?
Moved in second, and call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determine that the proposed site plan amendment is a Type 2 action pursuant to 6NYCRR, 617, print 5, print 20, for which no further environmental review is required.
Second?
Moved in second, and call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries seven zero.
And I move that the planning board grant additional amendment site plan approval for Fairview Commons amended site plan subject to the following, 1 through 7, A, B, C, D. Or is it 3?
3.
And then all of the things below.
7, 7, A, B, through the bottom.
Oof, who wrote that?
We got Roman numerals, we got.
We've got Roman numerals and regular numerals.
And letters.
We have a second.
Second.
Moved in second, and call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Crown Castle Verizon Communications Tower, planning board to declare lead agency intent regarding replacement of a telecommunications monopole at the Poughkeepsie Day School, 244 Borben Road, Zoned IA Institutional, .266 acres, Poughkeepsie Day School owner.
Geez, these guys are still awake.
Where is it right up on this?
Good to be able to see people, they're digital.
Anybody want an extra?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Anthony Morando, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Crown Castle. With me tonight is Stephen Matthews from Tectonic Engineering. They're preparing the drawings and the visual analysis, among other things. I think first, I'd just like to introduce the applicants to the board. The two applicants being Verizon Wireless, which many of you have probably heard of, if not have them in your pocket right now. The other is Crown Castle, which you may not have heard of, but they are a, really a global communications infrastructure company. They essentially partner with wireless providers to help provide the infrastructure to serve the communities. I'm gonna give a quick introduction and brief overview, and then Stephen will walk through the plans. The project involves the Poughkeepsie Day School campus, which many of you probably know has an existing communications tower on the rear or back of the property, on that heavily wooded portion. The, it received approvals back in 2003 to have a communications tower, and that tower still exists. The proposal from Crown and Verizon is to replace that existing tower, that wood pole, with a more up-to-date monopole, which would increase the height from 80 feet to about 105 feet. The pole now, which Stephen will mention, is outdated, it's wood, it's a guide tower. The proposal, this proposal would essentially allow for the existing carrier, AT&amp;T, which is on that pole, to be placed on the new pole and also accommodate Verizon Wireless. So ultimately, it's a form of co-location, to get two carriers in one location, but it is an upgrade in the pole itself. Your code allows and permits communications towers in the IA District, subject to obtaining a site plan approval and a special use permit. We believe that the application materials show compliance with the special use permit standards. I would note one point, just because it was very recent, that the, I'm sure you're probably aware, the town board actually amended the provision of the code dealing with wireless towers, excuse me, communications towers, to actually change the permitted height. A permitted height is now two times the maximum permitted height in the underlying district. So in the IA Zone, it's 60 feet, times two is 120. Our proposal's at 105, so we do comply with the height restriction. One thing I wanted to provide to you before Stephen went through the plans quickly was copies, really more handheld copies of the plans. What we did is, after submitting, we went through and reviewed the recently approved solar facility, and we had the solar facility overlaid on our plan to show that it doesn't create a conflict with our proposal. So Stephen will show you those tonight. We do have full-size sets for any referrals the board may do to provide to your staff, and Stephen's gonna hand out a smaller size version, so you can quickly take a look as we walk through the plans. You do, there the site plans, it's just that a couple of the sheets now show an overlay of the solar facility on the same property. It wasn't, it wasn't shown on the original submission.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah, so we quickly added that.
That was interference.
We also have copies to provide to your staff of the environmental assessment form with one page of the EAF had to be updated just to change the calculations as far as what existing, for instance, existing forested areas changed. It doesn't change anything as it relates to the project, but the overall site. So I'll provide copies of that to Eric and Neil at the close.
Hello?
Hello.
As Anthony said, my name's Steve Matthews, I work with Tectonic Engineering. We are the engineer of record for Crown Castle and Verizon Wireless. So the first thing I'd like to go over is the overall site plan. One thing Anthony pointed out was the adjacent solar development, which we have highlighted here in the plans. The cell tower is back here, the existing tower and new tower. I think the new tower is about 20 feet away, so we're keeping it on the same, on the hilltop, creating a new fenced compound around that. But globally for the site, you can see the extent of the solar project here. This tree line that comes towards the back east side of the property is the extent of the solar development. Through here, this dark portion here is the access path to the tower. Their construction fence and limits of clearing goes through this area. They have some grading in this area. Their stormwater pond is here, so outside the extent of the access road. They do have a check dam that comes in this area, which is close to the access road, but we do skirt it, and I don't think there is any conflict there. This access path is clear of any infrastructure needed for the solar project. They just have grading back to existing grade here in this area. So overall, there is no major impact of the solar project to the telecommunications project. Now I'm gonna flip to the detail site plan on the next page, which is C1B. So we're zooming in a little more here on the overall telecommunications project. We'll start from the edge of the asphalt access road behind the school. There's an existing gravel road that comes in to the existing tower compound. It comes in straight through to the hill here. There's an existing AT&amp;T shelter at the base of the hill. The existing gravel access road wraps around the hill, uphill to the existing tower. We are going to follow that same access path and just improve the gravel road. It will be a 12-foot wide with gravel as needed, as an improvement to the existing road. There are some parts where it's overgrown and just dirt and not gravel, so that will be improved. The corner, the nearest corner of the solar compound fence is here, and as you can see, it's probably 30 feet from the access road, so plenty of room there. The check dam I mentioned, I think, is right here, so there should be no conflict there. Then, as soon as we're clear of this area, then it's just uphill along the existing path to the top. The existing tower is right here, near, nearer to the edge of the cliff. It's a wooden 80-foot pole, so not tall enough to accommodate the Verizon installation. It is also, as Anthony said, outdated, it's a guide structure, so that needed, it needs to be replaced. We're proposing a new steel monopole that's 105 feet tall. It'll be going about 25 feet from the existing tower. We are fencing off the area around the tower and the Verizon platform, leaving ample space here for a future co-locator. The new compound will be gravelled. The current compound, there is not much gravel up there, it's really a small clearing for the tower, and so that will be improved, there'll be some tree clearing needed, new gravel surface brought in and fenced as well for security. The fence will come down the hill and enclose the AT&amp;T shelter. Currently, there is no fencing at all on the site, so the entire lease area, which is 50 by 100, will be fenced off for security. We are proposing no tree removal in this area, the slope is just too steep, it won't accommodate a future co-locators equipment, so we're going to leave this as is in its natural state currently. And I think that's about it, unless, if you'd like to see the elevation of the tower that is on sheet C3, which is really just a schematic of the 105-foot monopole. Verizon will be the carrier at the top. AT&amp;T will remain at its current center line on the existing tower at 80 feet, and the lighter antennas there are the future carrier.
In, I think that's pretty much it. It's unlike a typical development, it's a pole. But what I, what I will add, just in the last few weeks, we received correspondence from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services confirming that, with a concurrence of a review that Crowns Environmental, excuse me, Environmental Team did, that there'll be no impact on, adverse impact or taking on any federally listed species or habitat. I have a copy of that letter I can provide. It does impose the typical restriction of not clearing before October 1st, so, tree clearing, but just very, very minimal tree clearing here, as you can see. We also received correspondence by email from the State Historic Preservation Office confirming there's no impact on any historic or cultural resources in the area, so we can provide that as well.
Okay, provide those copies of those to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Let's see, who do you want to start with? We'll start with Rocco.
I don't think I have much at this time.
Brian? This is mostly, we're gonna go for lead agency, this is.
Yeah.
I'm good for now. Here. Good? Carl?
Good?
Yeah, mostly I'm just asking if you have a backup generator planned on this site?
Yes.
Is there one currently?
The, well, Verizon's not currently there, so Verizon won't be installing its own backup generator. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. I am not sure if AT&amp;T currently has one or will have one as a result, but I don't know if you know the answer to that, Steve.
AT&amp;T currently does not have a generator.
Okay.
I don't know if they're planning to add one.
That's not part of our proposal, but Verizon is proposing a generator.
Verizon will have one, yes.
And I assume, now that you know the solar arrays there, and the underground wiring stuff is taken care of, to have no conflicts with them. The only other thing I want to mention is the, this is, you know, you're making the tower a little taller, it's within the Class D airspace at Dutch County Airport, which is a five-mile radius out, and Class D goes from the surface to 1200, I believe. So I don't know if the 105-foot is, needs a light on top or not.
There is a, there is a beacon proposed at the top. It's, it's interesting, because the existing pole is essentially, I'm probably speaking incorrectly, I'm not an FAA expert, but it's essentially in a grandfathered state, so anything you do to that pole now would essentially call for a beacon installation, but that is proposed at the top.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thanks.
Good question. I like that. Beacon. Red?
What kind of finishes on this pole?
It's a galvanized gray finished, sort of blends in with our unfortunate, most of the time cloudy weather, but that's typically what it is.
So there's not any problem with reflection or any?
No, that's why, yeah, it's galvanized.
It's like a dull.
Okay.
Feel free to correct. Dull gray, correct.
Okay, Eric.
I, in some of the other new tower applications, we've seen there's a fairly extensive ground network of cabling of the ground for grounding purposes. Is that going to be required for this?
Correct, yes. So there'll be a grounding system for lightning protection?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's copper ground system, there'll be around the perimeter of the fence inside the compound underground, and you, you know, copper wiring that, you know, very thin.
Could you just make sure that's detailed on the plan, so that we're able to evaluate whatever disturbance or depth is related to it, or rock removal or whatever else?
Sure, absolutely.
Just so that the engineer and staff can make sure that's covered? That will just help us progress the review. We'll add that detail.
Okay. Eric, good?
I'm good. Go to a public hearing at some point in time? Doesn't, the cell towers not go to a public hearing?
No, I don't think so.
Special permit?
It's a special permit.
It's mandatory public. Yes. Frank?
So, they look silly when they're standing by themselves, but have you seen the ones where they make them look almost like a tree?
Yeah, tree pole, yeah.
There's one on 17, I think, in Jersey going down, but we're standing within, there's no thought on that? I mean, you guys didn't give some consideration to doing that?
Steve, you could certainly answer it. I don't think that was part of the proposal for a couple of reasons. One, it's in an area where it really, when you make a pole into a tree, and I've done this, I've been working in this field a long time, it sometimes creates a larger girth and makes it almost more noticeable than you otherwise would want it to. So, in this case, where it's sort of at just around the tree line and kind of hovering, and really, if you look at the visuals, the visibility's very minimal, it would probably result in a more noticeable structure. So no, I don't, I don't think so, that that's been considered, but.
Yeah, and one other part of that, too, is to keep the conical shape to the top of the tree, the first antenna level can't be at the very, very top, or the antennas will stick out. So what'll happen is, is Verizon's 120-foot center line, for that to remain, if you turn it into a tree, the top of the tree will be at 135. I'm sorry, let me back up. Verizon's at 100, so the top of the tower would end up being 115, not 100, 105, 100.
Stick up more.
Yeah, so it'll go up another 10, 15 feet.
Yeah, you did a great job on showing all these pictures from the neighborhood.
Yeah, if you do look through the visual study, you'll notice it's very, very limited visibility. We flew the balloon, it was only visible just above the treetops in very, very few areas.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, most notably right in front of the school. I don't know if the school had any EMF comments or anything like that.
And we provide all that analysis. Federal government requires that they conduct the RF emissions analysis, submit it as part of their FCC license, so that's all addressed in that way.
Okay.
But we did provide copies of that to you as well, in our materials, just so that's on file with the town.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of notice. I was gonna say, I had a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second?
Moved in seconded, call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on the application pending establishment of lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the comments planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 5.
Second? Moved in seconded, call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries zero. I'll see you in?
July 20th?
30. Yeah, July 20th, right. That'll be 30 days.
Thank you very much, and I'll provide copies of everything we referred to to Carol.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sago, Shainer, Lot Line Revision, Lot and Revision.
Sago, Shaner, Lot Line Revision, Lot Line Revision Review Regarding a Proposal to Convey a .175 acre portion of Three River Bend to Four Main Streets, Zoned R20 Resident Single Family, 20,000 square feet, and RNH Residence New Hamburg, 1.0448 acres. Andreas Sago and Edwards owners and Marjorie Shaner owner. So this is a huge revision. Come on up. Don't be afraid, we don't bite. I don't even know what the recommendation for this one is. Hi, who's gonna, Eric, is this you?
Yeah.
You have any kind of presentation or anything, or you're okay?
No.
You are the applicant?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You want to just introduce yourselves, just identify?
Sure, I'm at, I'm at Siago. I'm at Four Main Street.
Siago, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's why I asked.
Thanks, Eric.
And I'm Marjorie Shaner. I live at Three River Road.
Great, okay.
Great, sure. Let's see, I had a couple of communications with the surveyor, so he provided a couple of items that were needed to be on the plat separately, namely the, some of the area and bulk setbacks are actually at a separate sheet that should be in your packets, and the engineer wanted the water and sewer locations. They are shown. It's a pretty straightforward transfer. Staff are recommending, we're actually, don't need to lead agency, the planning board's the only ones, so we can, if the planning board is inclined, staff are recommending that make an environmental determination and people waterfront consistency determination and approve the lot line revision with some conditions that would require a little follow-up. And plus the reminder that there is some, actually, I think they already gave us all the legal deeds, so we'll just have the attorney review them, and if they're okay, you'll be good to go pretty quick.
Great. Thank you. Okay, anything, Brian?
No, I'm great, thank you.
Peter? Carl?
Backyard looks nice, landscape, the whole, whole project's coming together, it looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
I'm good.
Ed?
Good.
You're good, okay.
Enjoy.
What did this one add?
Sat here all this evening just. We commend you.
Thanks.
Now, there's enough, there's, there's gonna be some mapping changes requested, so how do I, how do we coordinate that?
The cop, whatever action the board takes will be sent to whoever's listed, will be listed to, it will be sent probably to both of you as well as to the surveyor. Or it will be sent to you and then just give it to the surveyor.
Okay, got it.
He'll put the, he'll take the information requested, and if he has any questions, he'll call me.
Okay.
And he'll put it on the map and resubmit.
Okay, got it. So I just, I don't, there's nothing I have to do, I just have to wait for something to come to me?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
And, and if the board acts tonight as recommended, we can deal with those minor changes, we'll review them in-house. You don't have, there doesn't need to be another public meeting like this, we'll just deal with it on paper.
They'll have to be, they'll have to be deeds and some legal paperwork that has to be.
Yes, yeah, I submitted the draft deeds with the required wording in it. I'm a lawyer, so it was easier for me to do it myself rather than get somebody else to do it.
So I'll give you my contact information.
Sure, all right.
Craig, we have the drafts in-house already with the application, so we can just send them over to you for review.
Great.
Okay. I move that the planning board, it's the only involved agency to review, determine that the, how do you say it? Siago?
Siago.
Siago.
Okay. Shaner, Lot Line Revision would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental impact data will be required for reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated June 15, 2017, prepared by the planning department.
Second. Moved in seconded. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie approval of local waterfront revitalization program because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such program.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And move that the planning board grant conditional lot line revision approval and also grant a 60-day time extension of said approval from August 14, 2017 forward to October 13, 2017, substitute the following 1 through 7.
Second. Moved in seconded. Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, so just.
Mrs. Buck, he's a neighbor of yours down there, right?
Excuse me?
Oh, yes.
Carmen?
Yeah. Right in there.
You want to terminate the meeting?
We got one more.
This one?
Which one?
One more.
Time extension. We don't terminate yet.
Where's the time, what is time extension?
Sheridan.
Oh, did I miss that one?
I lost it, too. It's in here someplace.
Oh, there's a time extension.
Go ahead.
Sheridan Lot Line Revision, Lot Line Revision, time extension of an approved Lot Line Revision for a proposed conveyance of a 1.28 acres to a residential parcel from a vacant parcel in common ownership, A. Kingwood Park in Kingwood Park, Zoned R20 Resident Single Family,